Welcome to the January twenty seventh meeting of the Goshen City Council. My name is Jones Lehman and I'm a fourth grader at Parkside Elementary. Thanks to everyone here for making Goshen a great place to live, work, and play. Now, can everyone please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, congratulations. And get some high fives for Jones. Firefighter helmet, of course. This was it. All right, you're welcome to hang out, Jones. Thanks for doing such a good job. But we have a long meeting and it might be kind of boring for kids. So if you want to be excused with your family, you're also feel free to be excused at any point in time. Okay, Clerk Treasurer Gary, could you please call the roll for today?
Yes, Counselor Gerber.
Here.
Counselor Ledrock.
Here.
Counselor Nisley.
Here.
Counselor Peel.
Here.
Counselor Reitzsacker.
Here.
Counselor Schrock.
Present.
Counselor President Weddle.
Here.
Youth Advisor Goleb.
Here.
Thank you. We do not have any minutes to approve tonight, but Clerk Treasurer Gary does have an announcement regarding a recent meeting executive session by the council.
Pursuant to state statute, whenever an executive session has been held of the council, before any council action is taken at the next meeting, an announcement has to read about that executive session, so we'll do that now. On January seventeenth, twenty twenty five, the Common Council met in an executive session at City Hall. The executive session was convened pursuant to the provisions of the Open Door Law and Indiana Code five dash fourteen dash one point five to six point one, and is permitted by state statute when considering the appointment of a public official or to consider applications. More specifically, the Common Council reviewed and discussed the twenty twenty five applicants for city boards and commissions. Appointments to city boards and commissions are scheduled to be made publicly at tonight's council meeting. The January seventeenth executive session was convened at three thirty four P M and adjourned at five twenty three P M.
Thank you, Clerk Treasurer Gary. That brings us to the approval of the meeting agenda for this evening. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion from Peel and a second from Schrock, I believe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. That brings us to privilege of the floor. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the council with anything that is not on today's agenda? If you could please come forward and state your name and write your name, print for the benefit of the Clerk Treasurer, so he can make sure he records your name accurately in the minutes.
And then we have a three-minute time cap that we are very generous with.
My name is Terry Martin, and I would like to encourage the city council to move the city council meetings to the third Monday of the month. It's currently conflicting with the Goshen Community Schools School Board meeting. And as a parent of a student and in Goshen Community Schools, I'm not able to attend both the city council and the school board meetings when they're at the same time on the same night. So that is what I would like to do is just simply encourage the city council to consider moving the council meetings to the third Monday every month. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Reverend Norton, and I come with my own poem tonight called "I Worry." I worry for the trees. I worry the trees might one day stop breathing. I worry about who stopped their breathing. Who took their last breath from them? Who? Say who did it? Tell me who was planting the olive trees and who was bulldozing them. I worry for the trees. I worry the trees forget they're all connected through vast networks of reciprocity without profit incentive. I worry that most politicians and presidents would not be able to pass the current citizenship tests due to participation and involvement in genocide for profit. I worry for the trees. I worry for the river, for the birds, for the flowers. I worry for the families terrified of being ripped apart without warning. I worry for those uncomfortable with what I say. I worry for the trees. I worry nothing will change for them. I worry for those who only see what they can gain from the trees. I worry, who shows love to the trees? Who shows love to our mother earth just to show it? Now, I've almost two minutes left, a bit under. Why is ICE in Goshen? Why was ICE here? I know that y'all have said that you will not let the police department do the work of ICE. Cool, great. Why was ICE here? They should not be allowed to be here. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, these are families, these are humans with hearts beating. And you want to take that away? For what? When will it be enough?
Are you asking for a response to?
No, I have another minute.
Okay.
Families belong together. 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 All families belong together. All of them. Thank you.
Reverend, I don't think you'll get any disagreement from anybody sitting in the front of this room. But just to be clear, the Goshen City Council does not have jurisdiction over federal matters. So we cannot decide whether or not ICE comes to Goshen. I just, we do not have any jurisdiction over federal matters. So I just want to make sure that's clear and understood. Whether or not we want them here is, we don't have a say. Anyone else who wishes to speak to the council?
Can I comment on that, Reverend? Reverend, there's many, there's people on this council that do not want ICE here. So please understand that if there was something legitimate we could do, we would do it. And the families in Goshen do need to stay together, and it saddens me that some of them may not.
Hi, can you state your name and please print it?
Yes.
Thank you.
I printed it. My name is Gabrielle Ott, and I'll briefly touch on why I'm here. So I'm a special ed teacher locally. I was a foster parent for eight months last year, and I am an aunt to five bright, wonderful Mexican-American kiddos. I am here recognizing that there is not complete control.
You've got it to microphone a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you. There is not complete control over their presence. But what I do want to have clarity on is how we are going to support families. With that said, so I did bring a few resources that I just think are great for anyone to read about the statistics about all that immigrants contribute, what percentage are and are not, and will likely not have the even chance to become naturalized citizens. And I just want to touch on a few of those. So according to the American Immigration Council, there are four point four million US citizen children under eighteen living with at least one undocumented parent. And that was twenty eighteen. In two thousand eleven, an estimated five thousand children in foster care had a detained or deported relative, parent specifically. Locally, thirty-six point eight percent of immigrants are naturalized citizens, but only seventeen point two more percent of them are likely to be granted that. So that is a lot of families locally facing the repercussions of this. And so I just really want to bring it up in conversation. I feel like a lot of people are afraid to even ask because whether it's a loved one or a friend or a neighbor, they're afraid will then be targeted. As a woman who is not facing that threat, I just, I hope to hear more conversation around it and more clarity. Where can people safely go to receive support? How are we going to make sure with an understaffed already foster care system, which I have learned so much about in the last year, and that was a common reason for things to not be implemented and provided, which was really baffling and jolting? You know, how are we going to make sure that those people are supported and those resources are prevalent and available and ready? I worry for my students. I worry for loved ones. I worry for people that I see at the grocery store. And it is affirming to hear that that is a worry that's shared because we should be. I'm shaken up here today because I'm angry, and I know a lot of people are. So thank you for your time. And the American Immigration Council. Thank you.
Gabrielle, thank you for coming and for sharing your thoughts. You're not alone. There are many people who share concerns about what's happening in the fabric of our community and in our nation. So our jurisdiction is limited to what happens in the city of Goshen. And unfortunately, immigration is not something that the Goshen City Council has control over. But we do have control about how we treat our neighbors. And I also want to commend you for being a foster parent. I know that's an extraordinarily challenging job, and Goshen needs more people like you. So thank you for being an educator and for stepping up as a bonus parent for kids in our community. We appreciate you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that brings us to our first action item on the agenda, which is the election of our council president and our minority party representative for twenty twenty five. Counselor, what? Yes, sir.
On in the packet or whatever it had that you was gonna run that part of it?
Yes, I'm handing it over to Counselor Weddle at this point. Yes. I'm just queuing it up for him, Doug. Thank you. I'm sorry, Counselor Nisley.
All right, so I guess we're, well, we'll take nominations for council president.
I will nominate Brett Weddle.
Second.
We've got a nomination by Nisley, second by Reed Sucker. Are there any other nominations?
I'd nominate Megan Peel.
Second.
Nomination of Councilman Peel by Letterock and second by Gerber. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll make motion that we close nominations. Okay, and then we'll just go ahead and go down the line, vote. First names are fine. I think we're on a first-name basis, so.
Megan.
Megan.
Brett.
I'll vote for myself. Again.
Brett.
Right.
And I'll vote for myself as well. Thank you, Megan. I'm sure you would do a good job. And I think we all do a good job, so thank you. And as always, please, if there's something that you want to see come out of this position, please feel free to let me know. And I'm happy to make adjustments however we need to to make it all the better. So now I guess it's up to Linda, Phil, and Megan to do the second part. I'm not sure we should have a part of that.
My understanding is that you were facilitating both votes.
Yes, that's fine. So I would take a nomination for the minority representative.
I nominate Linda.
Second.
So we've got a nomination of Councilwoman Gerber by Peel, second by Letterock. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close those nominations. We'll go ahead and do a voice vote regardless.
Linda.
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 Okay, and Councilwoman Gerber, you are the minority representative. So now we'll go ahead and go to the council appointments to the city boards and commissions you'll see in your packet. Again, these are only for the council appointments, not any of the appointments by the mayor. And we'll just go ahead and kind of go down the list here. We'll start with redevelopment commission. We have two appointments. They're both one-year terms based upon state statute. We had three applicants. I applied, current member. Colin Yoder applied, current member, and then Jason Oswald applied as well. Go ahead and take a nomination.
Those Weddle and Yoder.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
We've got a nomination for Weddle and myself, Colin Yoder. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Jason Oswald.
Second.
So what I'm going to recommend we do, if everyone's okay with that, let's do one nomination at a time. So for, does that make sense? That way it doesn't get, for instance, if Councilman Nisley dominates myself, it's seconded. And one of you want to nominate Jason, then we would vote between myself and Jason. We would nominate the second one, and then you could renominate Jason and Colin. Does that make sense?
It does.
I think that might be easier than the way we've just.
Makes sense.
Okay, so let's start with one nomination.
Fine.
Who do you want to nominate? Weddle?
Second.
Nomination of my Brett Weddle by Nisley and second by Reed Sucker. Is there a second nomination for that?
Nominate Jason Oswald.
And second.
Okay, so we've got nomination of Jason Oswald by Gerber and second by Letterock. Any further nominations on that one position?
Bush.
Please.
Don't miss the position that you hold, one that we point, like we vote from the council. Is it required that we have someone from the council? We just happen to.
We, historically in the past, we've had two members from council a lot, but haven't recently. I've always felt it was good continuity because there's a lot going on with redevelopment commission.
Always for some reason, I thought it was one we picked from the council.
No, it does not have to be a council member. So.
I'd like to nominate Colin Yoder.
We're not doing that yet.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so for the first nomination, we have Weddle and Osborne. So let's do a voice vote for this one position.
Oswald.
Oswald.
Weddle.
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 Weddle. So Weddle gets the first position by a five-two vote. Let's open up for the second position.
I nominate Colin Yoder.
Second.
Got a nomination of Colin Yoder by Reed Sucker, second by Schrock. Other nomination?
I nominate Jason Oswald.
And second.
And so we have a nomination of Oswald by Gerber, second by Letterock. We'll close the nominations. Let's do a voice vote for that as well. Megan?
Can I comment?
Please.
My vote is going to be for Colin, and I only, and I want to preface this by saying Jason Oswald would be an amazing member of the redevelopment commission. And I think that in the future, when there's open positions, we really need to have him on there. I trust in Colin, and he's only had a year on there, so I think that he deserves some more time. So that, I just want to preface that by saying this is nothing against Jason.
And I would agree with that wholeheartedly. I think he would do an amazing job as well. As I've indicated, there's a long, a large learning curve with redevelopment commission. And I think Colin does a good job, and he's one year in. And, but yeah, again, I would agree with that statement, so.
I would also just throw in, I'm gonna vote for Oswald, but it doesn't, that's, you're doing great. Colin did, I'm sure did great.
Yeah.
So there's no animosity involved. It's just supporting who we think would be good.
And I, that's a perfect statement. So we'll start with the voice vote. Gerber?
Oswald.
Oswald.
Yoder.
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 Yoder. So Colin Yoder reappointed by five-two vote. Thank you for that. We'll go on to the Community Relations Commission. There's three appointments, but we only had two applications at this point in time. Current member of Iman Maj and Lori Popsi.
Monge.
It's Mo.
Monge.
Monge.
Thank you. Thank you. So I think since we only have two applications, we want to do this all.
We accept them.
Okay.
Second.
So motion to accept both by Nisley, second by Letterock. Let's just do all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that passes. The two of them will be reappointed by a seven-o vote. We'll go to the Board of Building Appeals. Two openings for that. Josh Munson, current member. And then we didn't have a second appointment, but I went ahead and thought we could nominate Jason Oswald. That's for me to reach out to him.
Move, we accept the two.
Second.
Well, so I'm sorry, if Jason hasn't been consulted, should we do that before we appoint him?
Oh, you didn't talk to him?
I did not.
It, given, I think there would be more than an adequate amount of time to bring that back to the council for additional consideration if you were to decline. He, that commission meet has met once in twenty years. And there's no present pending consideration. So we should have time to make adaptations with Jason and come back to the council and say we would need to appoint someone else. So while it's not typical protocol, I think it would function fine in this specific.
So I guess we can do it one of two ways. We can just do it without him and appoint him later once he is reached out to. Or we could just do it and then reverse it if needed.
And his applicant, didn't, application, didn't he say?
He listed a number of different. He listed a number of different.
Yeah. So I mean, so it's not like.
I, I think he'd be a good candidate. I'll just weigh in on that because he has a lot of construction background, but he is not presently doing construction. So one of the challenges with that is if you want to make an appeal, you don't want to be an active builder at the time you're making an appeal. So he would, for the council's consideration, I think he'd make it be an ideal candidate. Yeah.
Would suggest we move with it since they haven't met in the past twenty years and we have time.
They've met one time in the last six months, and it was probably at least two decades before that.
I agree with the mayor. I think we move forward, and if not, if he doesn't want to do it, we can come back later.
I also look at it as a way to get his foot in the door. So we had a motion by Nisley, a second by, I believe, Peel. Going to close nominations. Let's just do all those in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, and that passes unanimously. Yes. We'll go on to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have one appointment. We had one applicant, Lee Rohn, who has been serving on that board currently.
We accept Lee Rohn.
Second. Motion by Nisley, second by Reed Sucker. Going to go ahead and, let's see, anyone has anything similar to close nominations? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, and that also passes unanimously. Shade Tree Board, I believe we have one appointment. And Adam Knott had listed this as one of the possible boards he would have liked to have served on.
Move, we accept it.
Second.
So motion by Nisley, second by Peel. I'm gonna go ahead and close nominations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, and that also passes unanimously. And I believe that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated for all the work and to everyone who step forward to commit time to the city. That brings us to item number three, Council President Weddle. Can you please introduce item number three on our agenda for today?
Clerk Treasurer, please read Resolution twenty twenty five dash oh one by title only.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash oh one, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Goshen, initiating annexation of municipally-owned real estate for the new south fire station.
I move for the passage of Resolution twenty twenty five dash oh one.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Nisley. Rhonda, will you be presenting any additional information regarding this resolution? Are there any questions or comments? Or were you introducing this?
I can't.
I'm sorry?
Anthony stepped out. Chief Powell stepped out.
Okay.
Yeah, I generally know what's going on here. So the current location, is this working?
Yes.
The current proposed location for the new fire station is outside the boundaries of the city. So we need to go through an annexation to bring that within the city boundaries. Typically, if a developer would seek to have land annexed, they would file a petition with the city. This common council would have to move on that petition here. It's the city that owns that land, and so we're asking ourselves to annex property. So this is just a first step. This resolution would basically just memorialize the fact that we're starting the process of annexation. The annexation will come back to the council in February for some further steps then.
Questions, comments from the council? Are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Hearing none, we'll move back to the council. Oh, Counselor Schrock, did you have a comment?
So we're just annexing in that small property where the fire department's gonna build, being built, nothing to the east or the west of that, correct?
That's correct.
Thanks, Bodie.
Counselors, are you prepared for a vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that resolution passes unanimously. That brings us to item number four on our agenda. Counselor Weddle, can you introduce item number four?
With the Clerk Treasurer, please read ordinance fifty-two one-two by title only.
Ordinance fifty-two twelve, Amending Ordinance Violations Bureau.
I move for the passage of ordinance fifty-two twelve.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Schrock. Attorney Segalman, do you have a brief update for us on this ordinance as well?
Yeah, this is an ordinance that's come before the council three or four times now. It basically adopts what ordinances will be part of the Ordinance Violations Bureau. And in reflect, refresh your recollection, that's an alternative enforcement process we have that avoids going to court. Basically, police code enforcement or others within the city can write tickets to people. Those come to Goshen City Court. And basically, what we're doing here is kind of bringing into the Ordinance Violation Bureau certain violations that have been subject to new ordinances or revised ordinances. You'll see fire prevention ordinance, the off-road vehicle ordinance, golf cart ordinance. And then remainder of them are generally cleaning up some things that are common violations that would work well within the Ordinance Violations Bureau. So this is, again, just bringing in some new ordinances that have been adopted and adding some that reflect fairly common violations.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council?
So this ordinance looks like it's in here twice. The second one is redlined, but it has the same information as the first one, but the red line is the new stuff?
Red line is the new stuff. That's correct.
Any additional questions from the council? Any questions or comments from anybody in the audience? Okay, hearing none, we'll move back to the council for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That has passed unanimously on first reading. Is the council open to doing a second reading on this ordinance tonight as well?
Believe we are, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor, can you introduce the ordinance?
Clerk Treasurer, please read ordinance fifty-two twelve by title only.
Ordinance fifty-two twelve, amending ordinance violations bureau.
I move the passage of ordinance fifty-two twelve on second and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Reed Sucker. Any additional questions or comments from anybody on the council or in the audience? Hearing none, we'll move back to the council for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously on second reading. That brings us to item number five on our agenda. Counselor Weddle, can you introduce item number five?
With the clerk treasurer, please read ordinance fifty-two fourteen by title only.
Ordinance fifty-two fourteen, amend ordinance fifty-one ninety-eight. The twenty twenty-five compensation for civil city and utilities employees to add two days to be observed as holidays.
I move for the passage of ordinance fifty-two fourteen on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Shrock. I'll just give a quick update on this, so um, while the. Uh, headline for this ordinance is that we're adding to, we are actually keeping the same number of holidays as we had in the previous year. Um, last year, we started providing election days as a paid holiday for Goshen City of employees. So that everyone can participate in our election process. This year is the one out of four years that we do not have an election, but we don't want to take away what we have already given to our employees, so it would be. Maintaining the same number of holidays in twenty twenty-five as we had in twenty twenty-four. What I'm proposing is that we add an additional holiday in this year um, on June the. Uh, twentieth, which would be the day after our Juneteenth holiday, which falls on a Thursday. And that we would add a a day uh, around the Christmas holiday. So that we don't have a holiday on a Wednesday, Thursday, and that expect employees to come back on Friday. Next year, when it is an election year again, those holidays would shift back to the election days. So this would just be a one year. We're maintaining the same number of holidays, but I'm proposing that. We we shift the days around. So any questions or comments from the council?
Is one again, and you said after the June.
To Juneteenth.
So Juneteenth is on the nineteenth, which is a Thursday, so I'm proposing that that following Friday is also. That one of the two shifted holidays, and then it would be the would be Boxing Day, would be a holiday. Uh, as well, so instead, we, the city has typically granted Christmas Eve and Christmas Day as holidays, which happened to fall on a. Wednesday, Thursday this year, so this would be adding the Friday to that as a holiday as well. And then next year, those would go, those two extra, those two days that were election holidays would go back to being. On those election days in twenty twenty-six. Any questions or comments from anybody on the council or in the audience?
I have a question about, does this? I I I get what, I'm struggling. I'm I'm struggling with the two days. Um. How does this affect over time specifically, like with the police department? Does it? With those specific days, does it add a lot um, of of? Does it affect their budget in any way, or any of the other departments budgets? I've heard something about the police department. Um. I I understand wanting to keep the fifteen days, but I'm. I I just come from a place where we don't get a lot of vacation days for holidays, so um, I'm not. Partial to. Getting over a bunch more, so.
Yeah. Um, there will be an impact on uh, the pay for employees, obviously it costs more to pay. People for those days. Um, my concern is giving people something and then removing it, and since the council has established that as an acceptable practice. I think it would be demoralizing to our employees to then take that away this year, so. I would encourage the council to consider keeping it.
Anytime, any vacation day, especially for police and fire, you have overtime, they still have to work. But because they're already getting it.
It's the same sort of.
We we could, you could have all fifteen of them consecutively. Right? I mean.
And it would still be the same. That was where my question.
It's it comparatively to last year, it's not going to cost the city anymore.
Okay. Be the same as.
Okay. I'm not trying to take away something. I'm just struggling with with the days. Sorry.
Um, if if this does pass, um. Employees will be having a nice three days around the Christmas holiday, which is great. Will it be explained to them that this is a one-time situation so that they don't come to expect that? Because as you say, once you give people things, it's very hard to take them back.
Right. Yeah, that the fifteen days is the fifteen days, so it would then be reallocated to those election days. Yeah.
I want to make sure also because giving off the day after Juneteenth off, I don't think. Makes me no difference when you put these holidays. They're the same number.
I mean, it could.
I don't want anyone to.
Day, I just picked.
I don't want someone to come back and say, well, you're no longer respecting the Juneteenth holiday because you're taking the day.
Yes, they would have that day.
I'm not talking about our city employees. I'm talking about the public in general.
Your point is well taken, sir. Yes. But that day, the nineteenth is also. A federal holiday that's recognized by the state or by the city as well. Counselor Reed Sucker, did you have a question?
No, I was just thinking, it's like, well, next year, Christmas is gonna be on Friday, so they won't have Saturday anyways, and. It's Juneteenth always, it's always the nineteenth, probably, right? So that'll be on Friday too, so those two will disappear anyways. So then you get the two election days filling in. But then next year after that, then we gotta come back and, well, I don't know how it's gonna, you'll have to pick new dates, because there'll be Saturday and Sunday here, whatever, but. Looks like we're gonna do it every year, this probably.
It's possible.
Okay.
Just like a company, you gotta move depending on what day those holidays fall on.
Does.
You gotta move, you gotta move and adjust.
Yes, typically, we try to shift those days. Um, yeah.
We do that, so.
Yeah. Good conversations of all. Okay. Um, any additional comments or questions from counselors? Audience, do you have any com- comments or questions to add? Okay. Since there's been some deliberation, I'd like to have a roll call vote. Uh, clerk treasurer, Gary, could you call the roll for this vote?
Officer Gerber?
Yes.
That's for Letterock.
Yes.
That's on Nisley.
Yes.
That's for Peel.
Yes.
She said yes.
I said yes.
Did she say yes?
Yes, she did. She mumbled it.
Yes.
That's for Shrock.
Yes.
That's Weddle.
Yes.
Okay, we have, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We have unanimous consent. Would the council like to hear this ordinance on second reading this evening?
We do.
Okay.
With the clerk treasurer, please read ordinance fifty-two fourteen by title only.
Ordinance fifty-two fourteen, amend ordinance fifty-one ninety-eight, twenty twenty-five compensation for civil city and utilities employees to add two days to be observed as holidays.
I move for the passive ordinance fifty-two fourteen on second and final.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Shrock. Uh, any additional questions or comments from anyone on the council or in our audience today? Hearing none, we'll move back to the council for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously on second reading. That brings us to item number six. Council President Weddle, can you please introduce?
Treasurer, please read ordinance fifty-two oh seven by title only.
Ordinance fifty-two oh seven, amend title two, civil rights, article one, community relations of the Goshen City Code.
I move for the passage of ordinance fifty-two oh seven on second and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Weddle and a second from Nisley, I believe. Okay, thank you. Um. I'd like to thank everyone for their continued conversations around this ordinance. Um, obviously, uh, civil rights and community relations are something that are of utmost important to the council and. Our administration, my administration, so I appreciate the thoughtfulness and care that the council has. Invested in making sure that we are serving our community well. Um, and providing adequate resources to people who are our most vulnerable. While also reaching out and engaging people in uh, a process of. Active participation in our city. Um, we have received a few, my office has received two emails today in relationship to. Um, advocating at the last council meeting, there was a motion. Um. That included uh, the removal of. Uh, the language around having a community relations director. So I received two emails today asking that that be reinstated. Which I am comfortable doing if there happens to be a motion from the council to that effect today. Uh, making that an optional consideration for the city. I think that's appropriate. So uh, with that, are there questions, comments, or conversations from the council?
I'd like to make a few comments. I I really appreciate the conversations that I've been having with regard to this ordinance change. And have had over the years, and I say that specifically because. We have been talking about changing this ordinance for a very long time. It's not something that is brand new. And um, specifically, we've been discussing changes to the ordinance and to the commission. Um, for a year, basically. And what the CRC does and what the uh. Um, community engagement department is going to do, and there's been a very strong push from. From the mayor's office to really engage this department and the CRC in the community. And so I I know that there is a um. A perception that this has been pushed through quickly, and it has not been, and I want to make that pretty clear. Um, I know that it's hard in the public's perception to not know what's been going on. In conversations during meetings that are either not public or in public, but I encourage you to come to the CRC meetings. Um, if you really want to know what's going on in these meetings, come to any one of our public meetings so that you can have a voice. And um, some knowledge about what we've been doing, and so I'm. Very fortunate to have sat down with one of my favorite members of the public um, these past few weeks. To discuss her perception and viewpoint on the CRC, and I really appreciate her input, and um. I have also had time to talk with Phil and Linda and Don and Brett, and um. Unfortunately, Gina's been gone, but it's been a really great process, and I think that. Um, having time to to talk this this ordinance over and really think about. Where we want to make changes and what we what we should do in the future and the the. The strategic goals that the CRC needs to have is in the forefront, and so. I hope the members of the public know that we take this very seriously. This commission is a very important part of our community. And we all here want to see it succeed. We want to see it thrive, and we want it to to be something we can be proud of in our community, and I think that. The mayor's office is really trying to make that happen, so.
You have one quick question before. In the packet. Is it what was passed at the last meeting?
What I put in the packet was what was passed at the last meeting. There's one red line.
Yes.
That shows the uh, amendment that was approved at the last meeting.
Okay. That's what I wasn't sure of.
It's the.
I wanted to know what the red line was.
It's the reporting, the annual reporting that was passed.
Oh, that was okay.
In there, yeah, right.
Perfect. That's just why I wanted to make sure what we had in front of us.
So I I do have uh, an amendment that I'd like to propose, and I I actually Linda printed it out.
Thank you.
So uh, before before I read this, I I just want to say that what we tried to do and in talking. Um, one-on-one with people over time is to address some of the issues of the community, and I also have received. Uh, emails and phone calls uh, concerning putting the manager language back in, asking for that. Uh, I think there's been a a need uh, from a variety of people saying we need to clarify what the role of a manager is. And and personally, I think that we've spent a lot of time talking about this one. Uh, uh, the manager position and maybe not enough time talking about the duties that are listed in this, because there are. The the duties uh, section is is really pretty uh. And i- it has, it has a lot of meat in there. Uh, and just, I just want to comment on those just before I read the amendment. Um, this is in two point one point one point five, powers and duties. Section five A is that the commission will study and recommend to the common council and mayor programs and policies. That enhance communications and understanding among the residents and community. To me, those key words in there are study and recommend. That's that's a lot. What what's going on in the community and that that should be, the commission should be and could be. Bringing to us on the common council and the mayor uh, recommendations for programs and policies. B is to develop and maintain programs that build positive relationships. C is the engagement with the neighborhood, and that's been mentioned, and sometimes it's been mentioned as the only thing that's left for the commission to do, and I I don't believe that that's true. That's a, that's an important part, but not the heart maybe of what goes on in the commission. D, if you look down at it. Identify emerging community issues and proactively develop strategies to address them. Through collaboration with residents and local organization, this includes town hall meetings, public forums. Listening sessions, creating task force and working groups that address specific community needs. Again, there's a lot of worthy work in that and meaty work. And and work that that has significance for what happens to the community of Goshen. And then the the rest of it is about reporting and moving on, taking some of uh, Bodhi's legal advice that. Uh, certain things should be uh, passed on to the Indiana Civil Rights uh, Commission, so. What what I'm proposing uh, is that we add this amendment back in, or we add this amendment uh, to the to the ordinance. And it is the mayor may appoint a community relations manager. The manager shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor and may be dismissed without cause. Among other tasks assigned by the mayor, the manager would facilitate the Community Relations Commission meetings. This facilitation could include, but is not limited to collaborating with the CRC commissioners to create agendas for the meetings. Working with CRC commissioners to develop short and long-term goals. Based on the duties described in section two point one point one point five of this ordinance. And providing guidance and support to CRC commissioners to accomplish these goals. I think this amendment. Listens to some of the concerns we've heard. It clarifies the role of the manager. It focuses the work on the duties that are a top priority to the commission, and it um. Points to a really important first task would be coming up with a strategic plan. Uh, right away. right away at the beginning of, of this next year, of this year.
Before there's a second, you change from, you have A through G. Could you change it to A through H since the red line version goes to H? That's just a, just a clerical thing.
I would like to change it to A through H. Thank you.
And where are you proposing it goes?
In the location that it came from, and I don't have that right offhand, but I'm, I'm assuming Bodie can find it. Sometime.
No, it doesn't go after H. It goes. I think it would be somewhere in the.
Where you might, would Bodie have to, could you go back and find where it came from in the future? Can we say this in such a way that that would be possible to put it in where it came from?
I think it was a separate item. I have to pull up the original because it wasn't under the commission itself. It was under.
Either be under commission created or membership of commission.
It could, it could go in 2.1.1.3 Membership of Commission Appointment Terms Vacancies.
It was in.
I don't think that's where.
2.1.1. Sorry, five powers and duties. It was point. G. Okay, this doesn't make sense. GC, that doesn't make sense. It was right up, it was in EFG. Why does it jump to?
I think it might have been a separate point.
Well, wherever it came from, it might make sense to put it in Membership of Commission.
Right. So I think there's a couple of places where it would make sense. It came out basically, well, it came out from 2.1.1.5. There'd be some logic to put it back in there as subparagraph I to follow what's currently in the draft that was in the packet. There would also be logic to adding a paragraph to 2.1.1.2 Commission Created. Because it talks about appointing the Community Relations Manager. So I think either place would be appropriate.
You have a recommendation?
My gut would say to put it back where it came out, which would mean it would be subparagraph I of 2.1.1.5.
I.
Is that a long rambling amendment that we need to do anything different, or can we just get a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Lederach and a second.
Motion by Lederach, second by Waddle.
But did I say that incorrectly? I'm sorry.
Okay.
My apologies. Motion by Lederach and second from Waddle.
Who made the motion? Lederach made the motion to place it at 2.1.1.5I. And if he gave you a copy, he changed the ordinance, the, his amendment to list the duties A through H.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioners, are you, commissioners, councilors, are you prepared for a vote on this amendment?
Any comments first?
I, I think this is an essential amendment, and I think it signifies the, you know, intent. And I think it, it underscores the importance of having a strong manager in that position. And I also echo the importance of having a really good strategic planning process that involves the commissioners, is led by the manager, and involves members of the community.
Does this need, does this need to say A through I?
Adding I.
And the duties are in H.
It's a good question.
Doing the whole amendment or just where we're putting it since you guys made a motion and?
He's putting the whole amendment in the location that it needs to be.
Okay. Councilors, are you prepared to vote?
We need to hear from the public first.
We can hear from public on the overall. It's up to you.
I was anticipating opening to the public when we had the larger discussion, not on the specific adjustment.
Okay. I do know that there, well, I believe that there are some people who intended to speak to this tonight, and I, I.
Specifically to the issue of adding.
Of this amendment, but.
I don't care.
That's fine. If we, if we want to proceed in that manner, that's fine as well. Would anybody in the audience like to speak in regards to the motion to reinstate the manager role as has been proposed and seconded by the council?
Julia Gouche, I just rise to say that this amendment answers most of my questions about the manager role. I think it defines that well, and I am strongly in support of it.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in regards to reinstating the question of the manager? Yes, Mr. Jansen, please come forward. Good to see you.
I'm David Jansen, and I've lived in Goshen 12 years. I lived in Elkhart 40 years. And I know from my black friends what they felt about Goshen back 50, 40 years ago. And I'm delighted about what's happened in Goshen, the changes that have gone on. And it's been a community-wide thing. We enter a time that's pretty perilous, it seems to me, about will we continue that? There's reasons that the Klan dropped their flyers in Goshen. I think they thought there would be a receptive audience perhaps, and that there wasn't speaks a lot to the ocean's change. So this is a good step, again, keeping the momentum going the right direction. And I urge you to support and add the person.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Terry Martin, and would you like me to write my name down again or?
We're good.
Okay. So I also wanted to voice my support and also a thank you to the council for this amendment to reinsert the director manager position for the Community Relations Council or Commission. And the work that the CRC does is vital to the social health of our community. In addition to initiating the Juneteenth celebration several years ago, they have developed numerous other opportunities for our city's residents to interact across cultural, political, and socioeconomic differences. Through the CRC's efforts, we have gotten to know our neighbors better. Indeed, one of the CRC's goals is to encourage respectful interactions among Goshen's diverse population. My studies abroad as an undergrad studying Spanish helped me recognize the importance of getting to know our neighbors, both local and global, from diverse cultural backgrounds. Building relationships with our neighbors from cultural backgrounds different from our own is an excellent way to dismantle racism and stereotype and realize that we are more similar than we are different. The CRC deserves a qualified and passionate manager who will continue leading their work to strengthen our community and make Goshen a better place for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Torres, I know that you had submitted a letter. Did you have any additional comments that there's a motion on the floor presently to reinstate the manager position? But I didn't want to give you the opportunity, since you were able to make it after all, to add any comments if you so desire. Thank you. Mr. Shank, welcome.
I'm Dan Shank. And I also affirm this amendment. And I remember back in early fall of 2014, Leroy Barry and I approached Darren Short, the director of the CRC, and we asked him, along with Nate Mater Rempel, at a meeting, could we bring this resolution idea to, to the CRC? And the answer was yes. And Leroy and I presented in mid-November to the CRC. And then a few weeks later to the Goshen Ministerial Association, and then also to the city council in March. And Darren was very helpful. And so I just would affirm here 10 years later that it's, it's good to have a director, someone to go to as well as a chair. And both of them were very helpful as this happened in Goshen a decade ago.
Thank you, Mr. Shank. Appreciate your thoughts. Anyone else that wishes to speak on this particular amendment? Okay, we'll move back to the council. Councilors, are you prepared for a vote on this amendment?
We are.
Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Are there any additional questions or comments about the second reading of the ordinance as it has been presented? Okay, anyone from the audience who wishes to speak? All right, councilors, we'll move back to you for a vote. All those in favor? And that passes, any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
I want to thank, yes, council, Councilman Lederach and Councilwoman Gerber for working on that. And then Councilman Peel for bringing it to us too.
But I, I think it's worth noting that this is, I haven't been on the council long, a year, but I've had more contact on this particular issue than any, which speaks, I think, to the climate of the, of politics now, but also to the involvement of our community.
And I want to hammer back on something that Councilman Peel said. If you're passionate about the CRC, then go to the CRC meetings. Start participating, starting, start being part of that group. And I think, yeah, and I think that with what you're emphasizing strategic plan and then what the mayor wants to do, I think we're going to find a shift in the effectiveness, not that it's been ineffective, but I think we're going to see an improvement in the action coming forward from that group.
I concur. And one of the things that we're doing with all city meetings is trying to have a consistent time. So having board and commission meetings at four o'clock in the afternoon, and they will be live streamed and recorded. So even if you cannot participate in person, there are other means by which you will be able to see, listen in, and contribute thoughts and ideas as well. So hoping to make those more accessible to people. And they will be here in this, in this space as well. So adding consistency in our meeting location.
I just want to add that I really appreciate the engagement from the members of the community. I've had some really good conversations, and it's very inspiring to see how committed people are. And I, yeah, thank you.
Would I be out of line? Yeah. Perhaps to look at 2.1.1.5H again. And at the end, you know, it says including the number and type of complaints referred. Can there be something put in there that would, that would say maybe for their, their manual report to talk about the positive stuff that happens too? Because that's, all that really says is the number and type of complaints. Is, could there be something put in there where their report would be on positive stuff too?
And that be under commission's activities?
Typically, those reports have included all of the activities of the commission. But it's that element has been pulled out and highlighted as an important, it's a very important function of the board, but it, okay, I, I would need a point of order. How that would be reopened if it has been passed on second reading? Would we? What would be the procedural steps to reopen consideration on the ordinance?
Matt, I see your, Councilman Schrock, I see your point, but I would say that the word activity in there for me has a positive connotation for me. But I think that's something that can be expressed to the mayor, which then can be expressed to the potential director or the commission as a whole. We not only want to see, we, we want to see the positives as well. And I think that the Indigenous Day program is one example that, that you've discussed numerous times that, yes.
Well, and I think to just reiterate what Counselor Peel said, the intention of this activity and the discussions that have been happening are, how do we strengthen relationships and how is that represented? And how, as Counselor Lederach mentioned, you know, what policies and recommendations may this board make to make sure that we are caring for all people in our community? And we heard some voices here tonight encouraging the council to be mindful of the ways in which all of our residents may be impacted in the coming year. So I think all of those, the things that you mentioned are certainly very important and would be appropriate to include in the report. And something that I can make sure happens is this is an outreach of my, of the mayor's department. Now, if you want to take it a step further, I would like to go back to the question to Mr. Stegelman to just go back to the point of order. So I want to reassure you that that's the intent, but if you want to do it in an illegal way, I will, I will open up, I would like to reopen the opportunity for Mr. Stegelman to answer that question.
I'm okay with your explanation. Okay. Just, to me, that was just, the good parts was missing from that sentence.
I hear you completely. Yeah. All right. So I think at this point, we're resolved on that matter. You're off the hook, Bodie, for a minute. And we will move on to item number seven, Resolution 2024-03.
With the clerk treasurer, please read Resolution 2024-03, my title only.
Resolution 2024-03, adopting a policy to allow participation in meetings by electronic means of communication.
I move for the passage of Resolution 2024-03.
We have a motion from Waddle, a second from Peel, and a third from Reed Sucker. Questions, comments, or discussion from councilors on this matter? It's been.
So first of all, I want to thank the council as a whole for holding this off until we're all present. I am going to make a, a motion for an amendment, which I think we'll get a second, but I don't think it'll go anywhere, and that's fine. But I just want to do that, get it out of the way. So I'm going to make a motion to remove sections one, sections two, and sections three.
Second.
And so now that we have a second on that, the reason for that is I do not agree with having remote participation under any circumstances. We were elected to serve on this, to be present. It's just a strong feeling I have. And so again, I don't know that it's going to actually pass my amendment, but that's, I just want to get the statement out there where I stand on this. And if you miss it, if you miss a meeting, that's fine. Whether it's a medical reason, whether it's work-related, whether it's take a vacation, I don't second guess, or I don't begrudge anyone for missing a meeting. But I feel strongly that being part of this council means you are here participating in person.
And that is why I second, pretty much the same thing. The thing is, we all knew what we were getting into when we were, ran for these positions. We knew what the times were, what, what it was all going to entail. And I feel strongly that if you can make the meeting, you should make the meeting. I mean, like Brett said, if you've got something else going on, I understand that. I missed a meeting a month ago because of medical. I just, I just have to agree with that.
And the reason I left the other sections in was because of the states of emergency declared by the governor or the mayor. We still have to have a policy. So those sections cover those cases. For instance, COVID was one of those instances.
Just so I'm clear, your motion is to delete. Your motion is to delete in its entire, in their entirety, sections one, two and three?
Correct.
Okay. So there would be no remote vote?
Unless there is a declared state of emergency.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, we have to have a whole lot of conversation. I think we should go to the vote. And I'm okay with that.
Well, I, the, the, the purpose of introducing this. Is to provide for those extraordinary circumstances where a counselor does need to be absent, but. There may be a need to ensure a quorum and not only does this apply to our council, but. Would be adopted by all of our boards and and commissions and we need a consistent policy. For all of our boards and and commissions. And Counselor Waddle, I agree with you. I think if people commit to being on a board, they need to show up. I also recognize that there's a reality that there are some rare occasions. And the state has developed a policy acknowledging that there are some rare occasions when people need to be. Able to participate remotely. And I think it would behoove the city to move forward with a policy that acknowledges that the reality. There is a narrow window through which we would be adopting this that because of the stringency of the state's guidelines about. Making decisions about budgetary matters and what qualifies as a reason for absence, so. I, I feel comfortable with the discussion that councillors have had in the preparation of this proposal. That we could move forward and still have the understanding, not only from those sitting in this room. Around these tables today, but from other boards or commissioners that we expect them to show up. In person and that that is the expectation, but with that. We will move forward with a vote on this amendment. And we'll do a roll call vote since there has been some deliberation. Counsel, Clerk Treasurer Gary, could you call the roll, please?
We're we're voting, just to clarify, we're voting on the amendment.
The amendment is slash the heart of this proposal. Clerk Treasurer Gary, could you call the roll, please?
The vote on the amendment by. Councillors Nistley and Waddle. Counselor Gerber.
No.
Counselor Lederach.
No.
Counselor Nistley.
Yes.
Counselor Peel.
No.
Counselor Red Sicker.
No.
Counselor Schrock.
Yes.
And I think we know how Counselor Waddle stands.
Yes. And thank you for. Hearing me out.
That amendment fails four to three. Any additional questions or comments from the council regarding this proposal?
I I appreciate the effort there.
And that's fine. I just, you know, we haven't, we each have strong opinions and that's fine. I appreciate the work that I believe that. No, counsel. The two of you worked on this together. I appreciate the work. Doesn't mean I agree with it, but I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I just don't want to see you in Florida.
Are there rules about background? Everyone will have shirts on.
Their faces don't have to be visible when.
They do. They absolutely do. Yes, yes.
Just not your feet in the sand.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you have an additional comment? I'm sorry, councillor.
I want to make some comments.
Yes, please.
Okay. I appreciate you, I appreciate you, Council President Waddle putting me on the spot, so. Appreciate all your comments. I look at it a little bit differently, so. I don't plan, I I mean, I'm I'm planning on attending every meeting. I've worked this calendar right here to work around. Fair Board, City Council, anything else that I have, and there's very limited time that I have to get away, so. But all the council meetings are on here. Now, if you throw a special one in like we did in December. I was already scheduled to go away, so that can happen, right? So that's not my goal. My goal is to work around all my schedule the way it is right now, so. I would just like that emergency option to do that. Now, I know that. And I agree that we were elected to be here, we were elected to do our job and be here. And if I can't happen to be here because I fly back on Sundays and the meetings are Monday. Then I want to do my job and the only way I can do it is electronic means, so you are giving me the opportunity to do that. There's only twelve business meetings, I think, this this year, so that that takes away some of the, some of the. The way that we can spread out the agenda, I guess, to try and incorporate everybody who's here, but. And we cut this down from, I think, four to two.
Yeah.
A meeting, so you know, we're down to like sixteen, seventeen percent if you take all two, if you take both, both of those meetings through the year, so. I think this is a good test amount. And. And I think it's important that. We use this as a guide for the other boards and commissions. And I want to make sure that. The way that I feel about it is we we have our mayor and she feels this is good for the city to conduct business. And it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. It's zero, so we didn't throw any taxes at anybody. All we're doing is just allowing those board and commission members and city council to be able to do it electronically, so I don't want to. In essence, I want to give the mayor the ability to use all the tools that we have and to be successful. So that's that's my opinion on the electronic meetings.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I agree with what you've expressed, Don. Thank you for saying that. I have one sort of side question or request that goes along with this. When the meetings are projected online or view, visible online. You see the agenda as the pin screen and a very, very small square that shows us in all our glory. And I'm wondering if that can be reversed. I've had some complaints because people who try to watch the meetings online. Are only seeing an agenda and I know with Board of Works, you see the whole screen. I'm just wondering if that can be adjusted for the public.
We can certainly look at that. We're currently looking at. Switching our platform from Zoom to Teams as well, so. The, those are worthwhile considerations for us to make. It's very quiet over in the AV corner over there. No comment.
This has been mentioned before, but for those who will be participating remotely. It'll be very important that this be tested well before the meeting and not as the meeting begins. Just to make sure that any technical issues are are worked out.
Yes.
In advance.
You'll have to have a strong internet connection and you have to be visible and.
I think the understanding is that it's on us.
Yes, absolutely. It's not. Yeah, so. So just as a point of clarification, the way that our. Meetings are hosted, they're presented as webinars. And so in order for you to be able to speak, because the general public cannot speak during a presentation, so. You have to be added, so that's why Amanda would need to be notified before the meeting that. You're planning to participate remotely. And we'd ask for, well, we're not putting it officially in the ordinance, a minimum of a twenty-four hour notice, so. She can make sure that you're set up.
Been on that side of things in meetings. Log in like thirty minutes before and work with them. As you, you never know what's going to pop up and have their cellphone on hand. And make sure that you can communicate with them. What's that?
Once we get our iPads. Anyway, we still need to vote on this.
Yeah, alright. Any comments from the audience before we move back to the council for a vote on this resolution? Alright, councilors, are you prepared for a vote?
Do your roll call vote, please.
I will.
Thank you.
Clerk Treasurer Gary, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Gerber?
Yes.
Counselor Lederach?
Yes.
Counselor Nistley?
No.
Counselor Peel?
Yes.
Counselor Red Sicker?
Yes.
Counselor Schrock?
No.
Counselor Waddle?
No.
Youth Advisor Gleb?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that passes four to three. That brings us to item number eight, the common council meeting schedule. As of this morning, I have one requested modification to make to this proposed schedule for twenty twenty-five. The, as you know, the city is in a, in the process of doing the. Part, the Shankland Park pool, which requires a bond. And because of the schedule for the bond, there is a need for a. Bond approval meeting by the city council. And I am proposing that that would take place on the second Monday of February, which would be February the. Tenth, I believe. So.
February tenth?
February the tenth, so the only agenda item that evening would be the hearing for the pool bond. So this would not be a normal business meeting, it would be. It would, it would be a council meeting, but it would be exclusively for the purpose of hearing the pool bond.
That's the email that we got, right?
Yes.
Correct.
At six PM.
At six PM, yes. So this would be a special meeting, so I'm proposing that we add that to the schedule for twenty twenty-five. And, correct. And to, as far as Becky is aware, she reviewed the whole schedule and that was the only. Time that they would need a special meeting for that particular project, so. To my knowledge, that would be the only additional meeting. Does that work for everybody's schedule on the tenth at six PM? Alright. Is there a motion to approve the schedule?
Actually, I'd like to. Say something before we do that.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we can do it afterwards too, I guess.
So let's make a motion and then you can make a, so I make a motion to accept as presented with the February tenth.
Second.
We have a motion from Waddle and a second from Schrock. Comment from Counselor Nistley.
Just to explain my vote on this a little bit, I will be voting no. For multiple reasons. I guess. I'm not in favor of moving, moving from two meetings a month to one meeting a month. I'm also not in favor of doing special meetings. On a separate day than what we have scheduled for council meetings, doing them through the week in the middle of the day. I feel that we're cutting out the citizens' participation in that part of it. Although we don't have a lot of people coming, I know I'll hear that, but. The other thing would be. It just, it just makes it harder for people to come to our meetings and and say what they do. The other thing would be, and it's been brought to my attention of multiple times through the past week and then here again. Tonight, that we're on the same night as a school board meeting. And I, I think that needs to be changed, so that's just a little bit of why I will be voting no for this.
And I did receive the same two emails that I think everybody else did today about people requesting. Not to have council meetings on the same night as school board meetings. So I'm, so, yeah.
Mayor, could you go ahead and explain, you've explained this before, the benefit of having it on the, this particular fourth Monday?
Yeah, as we looked at the calendar. I think we're in alignment with the school board because they're finding that there's lots of holidays and things that conflicted. On those other Mondays, so that's why we ended up on the. Schedule that we have now.
And the other thing.
And the other reason was to provide an adequate amount of time. For Deputy Clerk Treasurer and the Clerk Treasurer to prepare the financial reports. So that we would have a monthly financial presentation for the council. So putting it after the third week. Provides an adequate amount of time for them to close the books from the previous month and present you with the most up-to-date information possible. So. While I real, I recognize the conflict, I hope that. By focusing on having one meeting a month, it still allows people to participate in at least one of the. School board meetings if they so choose. But allows us to operate as efficiently as we need to.
Which? City council meeting is going to be the joint one with the school board?
They declined having one this year. So. There will not be one. But we're still looking at an opportunity to have the kid council and youth council join us at some point, so.
I share some of the concerns that Counselor Nistley expressed and I also understand that this is. Extremely difficult to come to a calendar that suits the entire city. And a lot of work has gone into this, and so I will support this tonight. I do hope that when looking at next year, we'll be able to take some of these concerns into consideration and maybe make some adjustments as appropriate.
Thank you for mentioning that again.
One thing I always come back to thinking about is, we had a request back when. Alan Coffin was mayor. The tornado sirens that would go off Thursday at two o'clock, we had a request to have those changed because the individual's grandson was napping at that time. Understand the, the problem, but you know, when you change something. You always have an effect on somebody else too, so that's the thing we have to consider too. There are people that want us to change it, but there might be other people who say, well, now we've now created a situation where now I can't make it. And so always, you know, there, there's always. There's always that to consider, but I, I always remember that, can we change the siren testing from Thursdays to to sometime when. Their grandson or granddaughter wasn't napping.
Well, and we didn't used to have the council meeting on Monday, but we changed it specifically to Monday for very specific reasons and. You know, having attended all the school board meetings because of my job, I wouldn't have been able to do that at the time, but. You know, the, we, we have these meetings on this particular week of the month for specific reason, and one of those being. How the schedule falls with vacations and that's how the school board tends to have theirs, so we have the same issue. And so we have the same day, and so, you know. It's, and I, I think I also said to someone today, you know, we have, the city has a lot of public meetings that have to be scheduled. A lot. So this is just one facet of the city, city of public meetings that have to be scheduled, so. I I truly respect everybody's opinion on there, I've been there, so, but I, I'm in agreement with this schedule.
Let's just remember that. We've been on a. Two meeting a month schedule for. Forty years. And everybody's pretty. Was alright with that.
Comfortable with it.
Comfortable with it and, you know, they're, they're going, we go back to, we knew what we were getting into. When we ran for the office.
And prior to this year, we were not on the school board, or were we always?
We've been on the school board's calendar for.
A year.
Three years.
Well, you're right, before that, the council had a long tradition of meeting Tuesdays.
And I've been a proponent of one meeting a month for probably five years and never had support for it, so.
I think it's worth a try.
Okay. Counselor, Clerk, I'm so sorry, man. Clerk Treasurer Gary, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Gerber?
Yes.
Counselor Lederach?
Yes.
Counselor Nistley?
No.
Counselor Peel?
Yes.
Counselor Red Sicker?
Yes.
Counselor Schrock?
Yes. Yes.
Councillor Waddle?
Yes.
Okay, that passed six to one. Uh. That brings us to elected official reports. Are there any reports from any of the councillors from? Your boards can, or commissions, or from your constituents you would like to share?
The, uh, neighbors along Kircher Road that had the rollover truck across the bridge. Number of them have expressed thank you to the city of the street department. We installed a warning sign on the bridge. That indicates it's a curve with speed with a flashing light on top. And so took a little while to get the flashing light working on there, but it's working. And so I think I've received three emails thanking us for that.
I've received also contact and, uh, with the icy, uh, conditions coming down that hill. Yeah, you, you have to actively brake to get to the speed limit. And so it would be nice if the county put something up out there too, because you, it's, it can get dangerous around there.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Um, the youth advisors, um, had a children's drive.
Can you speak a little bit more closely to the mics so people can hear you? Thank you.
The youth advisors at like the end of December had a children's drive and with the help of the school and councilman Lederach, we were able to donate. Whole bunch of stuff for kids and mothers or mothers that just got babies. And. For the month of January, we were able to give back to. The students at Goshen High School by giving them little goodie bags and motivational cards during finals week. And a lot of them enjoyed that. And we decorated mirrors as well. So like, you know, good luck. Finals week and they all enjoyed that. Job.
Thank you so much, advisor Galeb. I appreciate hearing that and all of your work and coordinating that as well.
I also wanted to thank you for giving us a budget so then we could actually go back and give back to the school and help students and motivate them.
You're welcome. Yes.
And you haven't been here for us. You, you left one meeting a little early to congratulate you on being a Lilly scholar.
Thank you.
So we tried, but you left early one meeting. So.
Play it to study.
Yeah.
And, and which college?
Probably going to Goshen.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear.
Got some alumni in the room. Go Leafs. Okay.
One other thing, I just wouldn't, and I'm sure we all feel the same way, our condolences and sympathies to the fire department for the passing of. Uh, Chief Alheim.
Yes.
He was very well respected in this community and did a great job. So we are sorry to see that.
Absolutely. I believe he served forty-two years. So.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion from Nistley, a second from Schrock. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah.
Doug, you should have, you should have done that before the electronic.
I should have, should I? I should have. One of them emailed me while I was recuperating.